Sorry, I. We're walking the streets of Sacramento.
Uh.
The council order, our special meeting of the Stanton City Council. This is accessory agency and housing authority. Hold on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council agency authority member Taylor.
Here.
Council agency authority member Torres is excused this evening. Council agency authority member Van.
Here.
Mayor brought in by Sheriff Mr. Warren.
Here.
And Mayor Chairman Sheller.
Do we share any correspondence?
Mr. Mayor, we have none.
You behave with rights and dresses.
Oh, we have not as well.
Who's public hearing now? So what's on the schedule?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There are three items on closed session for tonight. Uh, we're asking the table, the first item for a conference with legal counsel to see if litigation in the Tal versus Stanton case, uh, two of the council members in property. Uh, Mayor Mr. Warren, Councilmember Van, and therefore, uh, Councilmember Torres is absent. That discussion. So we're asking that continue that the next meeting. Uh, the remaining two items on closed session are conference with legal counsel to see if litigation, as well as conference with legal counsel to see if litigation at Houston Pacific Residence Association versus.
Point forward. Um, just because we don't have a forum. As long as we don't take it in action, we should, uh, at least.
Uh, Mayor and Council, um, because in that closed session, there would be two council members um, who would be able to participate, I would suggest that there should be a forum in that closed session to make that discussion. It wouldn't necessarily be action, but it would also be discussion deliberation. So, uh, can provide, I can provide a further report in writing to the city council of the three members and also have this discussion the next meeting.
Deputy Stanton, you will adjourn to the seats.
The council will proceed to closed session at five forty P M. and resume at nine thirty six thirty P M. We make reservations to be.
Could we have a reopen and call for the Stanton City Council's accessory agency and housing authority at six thirty? Hold on, hold on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council agency authority member Taylor.
Here.
Council agency authority member Van.
Here.
Council agency authority member Torres is excused this evening. Mayor brought in Vice Chair Mr. Warren.
Here.
And Mayor Chairman Sheller.
Here. Um, before we continue on, uh, we have another paper on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. There's nothing to.
Thank you. All right, let us now join our new chief, giving us our pledge.
For heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as. We have, uh, no special presentations and awards tonight. So that will reduce on the consent count, which we can take in one motion, considering the press from staff of the public.
Mr. Mayor, we have that.
Thank you.
Um, I need to abstain from the minutes right last.
You don't have to abstain as long as you're with and acceptable with the how the the meetings are recorded. You'll be acceptable to, uh, on the approval. Yeah.
Okay, it's your motion. All in favor? Fine. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We have no public hearing tonight. We have unfinished business, item eleven A, which is approval of city ordinance.
I can get out of this one. It's a long title. Good afternoon, honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Before you have this evening, this unfinished business item number eleven A, which is approval ordinance number one one four two. This ordinance was introduced at the regular city council meeting of April ninth, two thousand twenty four. The recommended action for this evening's, for me to read the title form number one one four two entitled, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Stanton, adding section five point seven seven point zero six five and five point seven seven one zero five to chapter five point seven seven, commercial businesses of title five, business license and regulation of the Stanton School Code, ensuring that the ordinance leave exempt from the secret for state California's equal guidelines. The second recommended action is that the city council put out these ordinance as presented at the April. And that includes staff's reports. Staff, you're answering questions at the minute.
Questions. I'm ready. Second, low call please.
We have a motion by Mayor Sheller and a second by Mayor Bill Timor. I'll now proceed and we'll follow. Councilmember, yes, Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Bill Timor.
Yes.
And Mayor Sheller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, number twelve A. This is consideration of the residents' no big application period for personal cannabis retail store.
Yes. Good evening, honorable Mayor and members of the council. At its meeting of April ninth, the council adopted an ordinance affirming the council's authority to open a commercial cannabis application period specifically for delivery permits. The proposed resolution before you tonight would open an application period for the four existing commercial cannabis retail store front business permittee between May ninth, twenty twenty four, when its number eleven four two becomes effective, June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. If approved, staff will oversee the application period and report back to the council later this summer. That concludes my staff report and this is the question.
Any questions? Ready? Low call please.
We have a motion by Mayor Sheller, a second by Councilmember Taylor, I'll now proceed, low call rule. Councilmember Van.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Mayor Bill Timor.
Yes.
And Mayor Sheller.
Number thirteen, call communications. At this time, members of the committee address the successor city council at housing regarding any items that are on, uh, I'm sorry, not items. Have we received any requests?
Mr. Mayor, none.
Yeah. As a, yeah, so the right to address the city council on any item that are not on the agenda. And therefore, I will close all communications, red communications. We have done. Uh, Mayor, Sheriff Agency, issued this. Great help.
I was hoping that we could, um, put on a future agenda about revisiting our rules and laws on events at our local businesses. Some of the businesses are requesting more events than what we have. From our laws, I thought maybe it's time for us to take away that.
I think that's, I'm glad that you brought that up because we had discussed that about a couple months ago just before the end of the year, where some of our businesses strive on having weekend events, especially outdoors. And even though in our ordinance that was first negotiated with some of our businesses, that was admitted. I think the more people that we can track to our city, the more revenue that we give, the more services we can invite to try to close. Any notes, way out?
I want to, uh, invite the city of Sacramento on perhaps what they're charging their citizens that they work with and how that appears to charge. See if things are changed. If they're working with them all.
I think that's.
Those people have a lot of work. It's like years.
It's a great idea. There's a lot of things that are very similar to what we have. They have just opened about eight cities. And I'd be good to see how it's working. First, what works for some. Okay, anybody else? Are there any maybe reports or announcements? Okay, um, I want to do the main agreement is that I will send a report to each of the city council members and staff of my trip from Sacramento. Quite lately, I give you the specifics of what I thought I was able to accomplish. Uh, and then I give you some of the resources that were made available to me so I can show it to you, such as presentations, uh, speakers, phone numbers. And then I'll tell you what I tried to accomplish, what I did accomplish, and what kind of help it. Uh, it's quite lengthy, so I think it's better to do that. Did I?
So you had one?
Yeah, I spent the first two days with about every elected official I could do for the government. And, um, I asked for help on, I would say, keep housing. Um, I was with some of the projects that we had going on. Uh, and I think probably most important was that they had very much of an interest on the programs that we're doing here, our city, that we had a chance to discuss previous to that. Um, I was able to gain the support on some of the housing issues, uh, with the, probably the chair of the house, which is Senator Upward. And I was also able to help with several lobbying groups, which were also very helpful. He gave me that aspect of it. Um. I had an exciting time. I got up at eight o'clock for my meeting with my friend. I got to the new building because the old building got torn down, so it's on the other side of town. I got there at eight o'clock, my eight o'clock appointment. I got there at seven forty five. I didn't want to be late. I'm not the early person. I get there, they say, well, we go open at eight. So I'm trying to tell the guys that we gave who already come from the higher control that I had a appointment at eight, and don't let me in, I'll be late for my birthday. But they were kind enough to let me sit in the lobby. Senator Donald got me, and it's history, and he's very supportive of everything. We're gonna shake. Um, it was, sometimes you look there and you're just, uh, you feel like you're going to a wall. I think it's a nice season, so that wall would be a place. Okay, um. Anything for a future meeting? Okay. It's your study session. Okay, Ryan, item fifteen D. Go ahead, um, say it.
Mr. Mayor, item fifteen D. We have city council initiated item. Actually, we might have to table this item. It is a Torres requested item. So, uh, this evening, council members, if this item will be taken into the next regular scheduled meeting, tell Councilmember Torres is in attendance to discuss this requested item. That's accepted. You deserve it.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I'd like to bring a couple of points that I was concerned about. This, we've already had the second reading of the plan. We should agree to the time and when with consultants. Uh, they've helped us devise a very good plan. And inherently, honestly, established standards. Uh, there's a variety of standards that we've already accepted. It's pretty much Texas cities of any type of construction, building that's going in. And the important thing is, is since we're, it's, it's already ready to go, and we need to keep the process. I would recommend that we go back to, remember, we can always amend, uh, amend it at any time. So if there comes a point of time when we need to amend it, and I know if, uh, Councilor Torres would like to to make some changes, there's always an opportunity to do that. I think we're so far down the line right now, it would not be useless to, uh, stop everything right now and go back. Um, however, out of respect to Councilor Torres, I think it's important that we give him that opportunity. Uh, and he can bring that back as an amendment. Uh, I did receive a letter from a group that was interested in making some changes in our standards uh, with some VAs, or VAs where we can call. And, uh, we will be receptive to that at that point in time. Other than that, I think we should get really gone on project. Third raise or table.
At our last, we needed, um, votes to adopt the top. That's already done, but I need this amendment that that. Do not hear.
Okay, but I also have the opportunity as well as, um, I did recognize that I did receive a letter. So that would be also, I. So this will just go over to the.
That's correct. For discussion.
Okay, items from the city council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I have the last thing.
First thing, exactly.
I think that's, it means thank you.
Okay. Chief. You're up. I'm welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um.
Chief, if you will, I'm just going a little bit closer to you. You'll notice the difference.
How's that?
Hey.
Okay, perfect. Um, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. In March, Stanton deputies responded to twelve hundred forty eight calls for service, which is an average of fifty three per day. Um, when not being signed to calls for service, deputies observed three hundred and ninety five violations of law and acted on them appropriately. Deputies made fifty nine arrests to include, uh, nine felony bookings, fifteen misdemeanor bookings, seven warrants, excuse me, seven warrant bookings and seven DUI bookings. Thirty one misdemeanor citations were issued and our motor deputy issued sixty three traffic citations. Enforcement in March, uh, there were two robberies, four violent assaults, three burglaries, thirty thefts, and two stolen vehicles. Investigations for March. Uh, investigators had a very busy month pertaining to various crimes that have occurred. Hundred and fifty six cases were assigned. Currently, forty five are still open and seventy five cases closed. The North Gang Enforcement Team, uh, arrested an attempted murder suspect and served multiple residential search warrants in the city of Stanton. During the service of one residential search warrant, a firearm was recovered and the subject was arrested for felony possession of firearm. Criminal charges are pending on this case and investigations ongoing. In addition, miscellaneous narcotics proceeds and gang suppression was conducted. Various creepy investigations were conducted, also related to the issue of Stanton. The Stanton Special Enforcement Team, the SETA team, uh, had over two hundred homeless contacts. Excuse me, uh, probation and parole contacts, seventy five, march arrests, uh, thirteen, five warrant arrests, a felony arrests, misdemeanor arrests. Uh, three stolen vehicles were recovered. And four suspects identified for, uh, were identified for investigations and five prostitution related arrests. Um, notable statistics, SETA deputies assisted Orange County Human Traffic Team. Uh, during this operation, we affected five misdemeanor arrests for prostitution and related activity. They also conducted continuous proactive patrol checks in the Wal-Mart and Lot and noted an increase in transit population. During these patrol checks, we encountered multiple probationers and parolees who were not doing narcotics sales and were in possession of narcotics in Rose County. Homeless engaged officers from March of two thousand and four had three hundred eighty six contacts. Eleven of those received services. Uh, probation and parole contacts was implied, and we made four arrests. Charges included two warrants. Four felonies, possession of meth and furnishing for sales, possession of fentanyl, furnishing for sales, possession of dirt or dagger, and two of the misdemeanor arrests, uh, for H and S possession and possession of paraphernalia. They also issued fifty citations, which included trespassing on tracks, uh, H and S possession, paraphernalia, and various standard just violations. HLO team assisted city personnel with clearing out the tracks, city code enforcement, you know, city health agency with food vendor operation and city code enforcement for homeless accountants. Um, response times, priority one response time was, uh, four minutes, twenty three seconds. Priority two was sixty minutes, and our priority three was just over twenty five. And community updates, I just want to thank staff for being great partners with Orange County Sheriff's Department. Our team is outstanding. I'm very proud of the work and our relationship. I look forward to sharing, uh, future updates on endeavors we're about to embark on in the city of Stanton. Um. We also did a citizens, excuse me, uh, Citizens Academy, uh, was held in March twentieth, two thousand and twenty four. And Sheriff's, excuse me, Orange County Sheriff's Department, partnership with the city of Stanton and Orange County Fire Department participated successfully in Citizens Academy. Tending to be incited to our department's mission, structure, specialized students, community policing, and diversity issues. Presentations by Orange County Fire Department, high quality fire safety, emergency response procedures, and collaboration in law enforcement for public safety. Um, that concludes my presentation, and I want to thank everyone for listening. And if you have any questions, uh, you can contact us, and I'm happy, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for choosing Stanton. We're very happy to have you here. You're welcome again. Please excuse my ignorance of the law, but, um, I know a lot of times on, uh, on trespassing, it's just misdemeanor and we issue tickets for it. I heard you mention that you have more misdemeanor arrests. What causes an action or what actions are there in misdemeanor sense that causes somebody to be arrested?
So in those contacts, um, certain things can be evaluated. So if they were contacting somebody that was trespassing, they, uh, they found he was drug paraphernalia or other crimes, and they had a dirt or dagger on them, something else that they can cite and arrest them at that time. But the initial contact may have been for the trespassing violation, which led to the discovery of them.
It's normally a certain amount of drug, right, for it to be arrested, not just.
Yes, there's, there're most, certain drug offenses are only citable, and you would leave the individual with a citation and promise to appear in court. And at certain amounts, or if it was proven he, uh, suffered for sales, um, that that might, uh, fall into their account.
And I think you said seventy five, um, parolees, parolee contacts. Um, if you happen to have a number or just a best guess on how many of the parolees in Stanton uh, might be on the.
I would have to go back. I'd have to look at.
That's all. I was just.
Oh.
Uh, Chief, can you come up to the podium and introduce yourself to the public, please?
All right. I am, uh, Captain Ryan Pierce with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and I have been previously selected as the chief of police staff in police services. I took office, uh, on Friday. Um, I unpacked my boxes, and I am on day three of, uh, my journey in the city of Stanton. Uh, I have twenty five years' experience, uh, with the Sheriff's Department to include custody operations, uh, patrol services in north operations, uh, to include the city of Stanton as a deputy and, uh, member of SWAT team for a little over eleven years. Uh, sergeant, worked for training division in custody operations and management, lieutenant. Uh, I worked in the Emergency Communications Bureau on the Hill as watch commander, and most recently as the academy commander. Most recently as the academy commander for approximately two years. With, uh, over five hundred recruits in the service, uh, and my tenure there for police agencies and Sheriff's Department.
Thank you. Um, we want to welcome you to Stanton. Um, we know that you have a good understanding of our community. I think, I remember you used to walk the streets very good. And, uh, I know that you've had a good chance for a good transition. Uh, we're looking forward to supporting you in any way we can. Uh, the council always has our deputies back. And anything that we can do to help you, please reach out to any of us or our city staff. I would be more than happy to be there. Also, um, we got to welcome you because we give you our shitty pin. And I was going to give you two in case you lose.
Thank you, sir. Welcome to Stanton.
Thank you.
Any questions? Anyway, Chief, welcome to Stanton.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, just wanted to share that I'm very, very excited to be here. Uh, I'm very proud of this city, uh, having worked it, and I, uh, look forward to serving, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, the city council, and the citizens of the city. Thank you very much.
Okay, I noticed that you also have your sergeant. Agent. Come on up.
I think I introduced myself, but for those who don't know or haven't met, um, my name is Andrea Bogdanovich. I am currently the admin administrative and investigative sergeant for the city of Stanton. So I worked patrol when I came out initially and then went into, um, the administrative role and also have investigation as well. Uh, my background, just a little bit about me, um, I obviously started in custody, worked my way out to patrol where I was in Norbalinda. Um, and then I worked in our safe division, so I did risk management for a little bit. I did recruiting. I worked out in the academy as well as a tax officer. I was only Hudson High Five out in the academy, so. Um, and then I promoted, I worked investigations, and I worked in our, um, just general investigations and also our sexual assault detail, and then I promoted to sergeant. And I'm so happy to be out there. Any question?
No, but you did two pins.
I do. I love, I appreciate the pin. Thank you, sir.
Chief. Chief, I just want to remind you, anytime we get new deputies in the city, we love the academy. Our course can be different for many minutes, so.
Okay, that's a bold.
Um, do we have any exciting events coming up? Any of the. Um, do we have any exciting events coming up? Any of the, we did not have?
Thank you, Mayor Council. We do have our Pink Town of Love then coming up in a few weeks on Saturday, May fourth. We have a few projects throughout the city, including with some of our church groups or nonprofits. I believe there are still a few spots available for some of those projects. We have a big kick-off at Stanton Central Park and Breakfast. There are a few sponsors that have generously donated, Gemry Housing, Townsend, Alliance of Starbucks, and Home People that we want to recognize about. And then on top of that, we do have a tea night out. We have a bubble stop for events, kick off this next, uh, summer season. We have a few spots for that one as well. I believe that's coming up on Friday. Friday, May seventeenth. Register online, Warren person.
Thank you. I also would like to thank the city staff for loaning me three tablets pretty quick drive on Saturday. We seem to have missed quite a start, so I'll work out. It means people have locked up, so I can thank you. Thank you.
We have our Women of the Station Awards coming up next council meeting? I believe it's going to be, um, May twenty eighth, after the budget suspension. If we have it up by the right.
Just for information, I have a few of mine. Is Sarah Zimmerman here? Sarah, come up and tell us a little about, I think you're new to the city, so come up and tell us about yourself.
Hello, everybody. My name is Dr. Sarah Zimmerman. Dr. Sarah is what I go by. I'm new to the city. I just opened up a mental health and substance abuse outreach program just down the street. Um, we're here to serve mental health as well as substance abusing. We're from schizophrenia to eating disorders to depression, anxiety, PTSD. We are an outpatient program, which is PHP IOP as well as OP, so we provide family services, individual therapies, group therapies, as well as trauma-informed therapies, which is EMVR and brain spotting. And my background is, is I have my doctorate in clinical forensic psychology, so I've done a lot with the police force. I've done a lot in jails, juvenile hall, drug court, and I found my passion and love working in substance abuse and mental health. I had the last couple, ten years, working in this industry. I've seen how it's impacted our families, friends, society, as well as increased a lot of the homeless and what's really going on in that environment. And that's what's really brought me to this area is just trying to figure out how I can be of service to our community and, of course, to this new beautiful city that now I'm a part of. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Well, it's the exact same stand-up, but happy to be of service any way, shape, or form I can, and I have a couple of cards, and I provided you guys with a pamphlet, and happy to take any questions.
So you're not getting through the county, you're applying, right?
Correct. Right now, I'm waiting for all of my applications, and I'm waiting to be in service with Medi-Cal as well, and we do outpatient services or out of network, in-network, and willing to discuss any contracts that I can do and serve with the community and the city. That's what I was here for, to see if there's any way that I can provide services and how I can offer my services to you guys.
Okay, you get two pins too. You know, you're saying. You're taking this supply, Kathy.
There you go. Thank you so much.
Anything else from this staff? All right, I'd like to adjourn to our regular scheduled meeting.